Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome to this special city council meeting of the Lubbock City Council. Today is Monday, May 14th, 2018. It is 11:04 a.m. We have a special treat today to open our meeting. Former Councilman Floyd Price is going to lead us in the prayer. Following his prayer, the Mayor Pro Tem will lead us in the pledges. Where'd you go? There he is. Come on up here Floyd. Please rise.
Good morning. It is a pleasure for me to be here again to stand before all of my colleagues, former colleagues, and it's a guy told me once that you can tell a city by the people that lives in the city. And I'd like to let you know here in Lubbock, Texas, you're the number one citizens in the nation. Thank you Amarillo for... Want to say our legal department, Chad, leading that department, I'm so proud of this legal department for the city of Lubbock. Secretary Becky, I don't see her there, but one of the greatest in this council who I've served with some of you for many years. I'd like to thank you for the foresight that you have in building up this great city. As I travel around this city, I can see it's booming. That's not haphazardly, that's foresight that you have. And I'd like to thank you so much. The new city council person coming in, I hadn't met him yet, but I hope that he will work with this outgoing city council person so Lubbock would hit on all cylinders like it is now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your second term and for your leadership. I'm just overjoyed when I go off and tell people about you. I could go on and on, but I must pray because Tony told me, Tony Privet, where is he? He told me if I be too long, he gonna set an alarm off. And all of you know I'm not long-winded at all. I say a very few words. Let us pray this morning. Father God, what can we say but thank you for the leadership and the citizens of this great city? We come to you this morning and we just want you to continue to bless in the future as you has in the past. Don't let there be any slack with the new council coming in. Let them continue to keep this city rolling because we know anytime something is as good as Lubbock, some prayers has gone up. And we are praying this morning that you would continue to look down on us and continue to bless us. Every person that is here is represented as a family. Would you please make sure that that family is blessed? We ask for forgiveness because we've come short, but that's okay. Where we come short, you pick up the slack. Now would you look at the health, the strength that it's gonna take for this council to continue doing the work that is done in the past? Thank you for my strength and my health. Forgive me again, forgive us again. Abide with us for now and forevermore and teach us to love one another. Every race, every creed, and every color, teach us to understand that we are brothers and sisters in this land. Would you do that Father for us? We ask it in the blessed name of your son who gave his life that I, that we may live. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen?
Amen.
And amen.
Amen.
Thank you so much.
Please join me in the pledges. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Councilman. Well done. Thank you Mayor Pro Tem. We appreciate you very much. We'll move now to the regular agenda. We have three items on our regular agenda today. Item one is a resolution from the city secretary's office. We would like to consider a resolution to canvass the returns and declare the results of the city of Lubbock general election held on May 5, 2018. In order to begin discussion, is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Thank you Ms. Gibson. Thank you Mr. Chitus. Ms. Garza.
Thank you Mayor, City Council, and members of this audience. As the elections administrator for the city of Lubbock, I'm going to read the results of the general election first for the city of Lubbock into the record. On May 5th, we held a general election for the purpose of electing the mayor and city council members for districts 1, 3, and 5. Candidates for mayor Dan Pope received 11,394 votes. Jonathan Cawthorn received 2,686 votes. Stephen Sanders was a write-in candidate, received 524 votes. Candidates for council District 1, Juan A. Chitus, received 613 votes. Patrick Kelly, 594 votes. Candidates for council District 3, unopposed, Jeff Griffith, received 1,571 votes. Candidate for District 5, unopposed, Randy Christian, received 3,823 votes. There were 14,604 votes cast into the election. And Mayor and City Council, the reports that you have behind you, the first two pages are a summary of all those votes and then it's precinct by precinct behind that. And then the second report includes what we call undervotes and overvotes. Undervotes are where a voter goes to the polls and might vote for one or two races, but not all of them. That creates an undervote. An overvote cannot happen with electronic voting, but it can with a mail-in ballot where they might mark more than one candidate. So those are the two reports you have. The persons receiving majority vote for mayor, Dan Pope, council District 1, Juan A. Chitus, council District 3, Jeff Griffith, council District 5, Randy Christian. And the recommendation is to approve the resolution for the city council to approve them and by approving it, you declare and certify that the persons named as receiving the majority of the vote are duly elected to the appropriate positions. Thank you.
Thank you Ms. Garza. Is there, are there any questions for Ms. Garza? Is there any discussion among the council? All those in favor of the resolution as it's presented, please indicate your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that very same sign? Motion carries seven to zero. Item two is another resolution from the city secretary's office. We're to consider a resolution to canvass the returns and declare the result of the city of Lubbock special election for the Lubbock Municipal Auditorium and Coliseum that was also held on May 5, 2018. In order to begin discussion, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you Ms. Joy. Thank you Ms. Patterson Harris. Ms. Garza.
Yes Mayor. The purpose of the special election was to give the city of Lubbock authorization to abandon the Lubbock Municipal Auditorium and Coliseum pursuant to Article 2, Section 25 of the city of Lubbock Charter. And the votes for were 7,775, votes against 7,244. A total of 15,019 votes were cast in this election. Recommendation is that you approve the results of this election.
Thank you Ms. Garza. Council, do you have any questions for the city secretary? Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve Resolution 2.2, please indicate your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that very same sign? That motion carries seven to zero. Okay, that takes care of the sort of the formalities. Here's how we're gonna go about this this morning. We're going to, first and foremost, we're going to honor the lady to my right and we'll do that in just a minute. Once we have a chance to do that, we'll take a quick recess where we have to go back and do some official type things that'll also allow us to reset the diocese and then we'll do the oath of office and presentations, comments, and we'll do those in the order of the, we'll do District 1, District 3, District 5, and then the mayor will be last. So, you know with, there's good and bad that comes with change and as excited I think as we all are about a new council, we will go forward without the longest-serving member of our council and a very good friend. So we today, I'd like you to join me in honoring Karen Gibson for her eight years of service to the Lubbock City Council.
Does that mean I get to talk now?
You do. The floor is yours Ms. Gibson.
Thank you. Well, first of all, thank you for that. First and foremost, I want to thank God for the opportunity to serve this city. It was certainly something that when I started, I didn't, I didn't have any idea that it would become a passion. I knew I'd like it, but I had no idea it would become such a passion of mine. I want to thank my family. My husband Scott, my kids Blaine and Ashley and James and Sarah, and of course my grandkids, Emily who literally grew up here at City Hall, and Riker. You know, families take a big hit when you are on city council. You miss a lot of family functions or you're late or something happens and you just can't make it. But it's a lot of stress on families and my family stuck through, stuck through with me through thick and thin and I just, I can't thank you enough. It's not easy and I know that and thank you. I'm gonna try to get through this without crying. I've been a big ball baby this last week. My friends the same way. A couple of them are here today and I can't, my brother is sitting here too and his wife Leanne and they missed it just as much and thank you all for sticking by me and being such a big support. But my friends, them too, we didn't get to do a lot of things and so, you know, they all were always encouraging. It's okay, it's okay. And so I think if you're gonna do the job, you have to do it right. And 30 to 40 hours a week and sometimes more during budget season, it just takes a hit on your personal life and I loved it. And they'll tell ya, I was like, "Council first guys, it's budget season" and that was my happy time. So, I know, I'm one of those crazies, but I loved it. Tony Privet, I know you're here. I don't know where you're at, but I know you're here. I cannot thank you enough for taking a chance on me. I know the first time I walked in your office, you went, "Oh heavens, I don't know what I'm gonna do with this girl." But you stuck with me and you taught me and you guided me and I cannot thank you enough for believing in me and guiding me through the years. And Jack Bush, I don't think he's here, but my sounding board, I couldn't have done it without him. Those two men helped me, especially my first term, learn the ropes and learn what it is to be a good council person and a dedicated council person and I cannot thank either one of them enough. Leanne Dumbald-Huddleston, who is now my sister-in-law, she was the city manager at the time, and Andy Berchem made me learn the budget. And I sat week after week, countless hours with them and questioned them and made them answer me and I know they hated seeing me come in their office, but they did it. And every week, we did it and I thank you. I thank you for teaching me municipal law, the budget, and teaching me what I had to do to be a good council person. I hope I made you proud. Jarrett, get back in here and sit down. (laughter) I get to say that right now. I don't get to say that anymore. You know, we hired Jarrett 18 months ago and I am so proud to have been able to be a part of that process. Floyd, I think you're right. Thank you Amarillo because he has proved us to be a great city manager. I said, "The city's in for a treat" and he's proved me right and thank you for everything you're doing and moving us forward and the progress you've made. I think the city is in for a treat. Thank you for everything you do. Chad, I got to be able to hire you also and be a part of that process and thank you for the team you've built. I think the city's in great legal hands and I'm excited to see what moves forward there. I don't know where Becky went, but I wasn't able to, there she is. I wasn't able to hire her, but I got to work with her the longest and her team. And it's difficult to leave these people because you work with these people for eight years and they all become family. And I'm up here nearly every day and I see them every day, but thank you for what you do with your staff. You have a great team, all of them do. And it's just been a pleasure working with all three of these leaders and I believe in my heart that our city administration is one of the best in Texas and it's because of the leaders we have. I believe that and thank you all. The council staff and I, y'all just are gonna have to indulge me, this is my time, so. (laughter) I've been waiting eight years for this. The council staff and I'm gonna point out a few of them just because I work with them every single day and they have to keep me on track and have kept me on track. They're kind of my keepers. Barbara Besse and she's actually Jarrett's assistant now, but when I first came on, Barbara was council staff and that woman literally kept me on track and just is a love and a dear and I just appreciate everything she did for me throughout those first few years. She kind of showed me the ropes and got me going. And then there's Angela who is now my council staff and I was determined not to like her because I liked Barbara so much, but she has become such a special friend and such a dear and she is such a good council assistant. The staff for the council, Bob, Angela, Amanda, they're all tremendous and your council is in very good hands with this staff. The entire staff of this city is just amazing. You know, they're the boots on the ground. They're the ones that keep this city running and without them, I'm not sure this city would be what it is. They are tremendous and if you ask them to do anything, they're all very willing to help. And I know they get a bad rap a lot of times in the media, but these are good people and they work hard for the city of Lubbock. So if you see a member of the city staff, just say thank you. And I see a lot of police and fire back there and guys, I can't thank you enough. Y'all are tremendous. You've supported me in everything I've ever done, all of you, and I thank you all. You're all very special to me and always have been and thank you. You know, I served with three mayors. I was Mayor Pro Tem under one of them and four different councils. And it seems like each council kind of took on their own personality. Every two years, you kind of have a different personality of each council. And although each one of them were very different in the way they handled things and the way they interacted, it was just an honor to serve with each and every one of them. And I think each of you, for your willingness to serve this city and be a part of a group. I love this council because they're, they not only serve their districts, but we look at the city as a whole. I have so enjoyed this council, not that I haven't enjoyed all of them, but this council has probably been my favorite because we, we look at the whole thing. And so I think each one of you, for the willingness to come together and look at everything as a whole. And lastly, I'll stop now, but I do want to thank the citizens of District 5 in this great city for allowing me to represent you. It has been an honor. It's been a privilege and probably one of the best eight years of my life. And I'll stop there. God bless all of you and God bless this great city.
So you're not gonna leave, this is, these are not just participation prizes. You're not, you're not leaving empty-handed. First of all, we have your photograph that hung out here and that, you get to take that with you as well as your, you'll take both of your Mayor Pro Tem and your councilwoman. Yeah, okay. But it, that's not it.
I don't, I don't like it when he says that, "That's not it."
We also thought it would be a neat opportunity for you to, to get some, some of these are the, the projects.
I just got my name on it.
Yeah, they have your name on it. The projects that you, that you were so involved in and so we thought that was a, we thought that would be a really, really cool.
Oh, this is cool y'all. Oh, that is awesome. Thank y'all so much. That is awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank y'all. Wow.
I think that's it. Let me make sure there's nothing in. That's it, that's it. I'll make sure. Okay, y'all may be seated. Okay, we're gonna take a very quick recess and then we'll return for oath of office ceremonies and presentation. So it's 11:27 and we're in Lubbock City Council's in recess. The Lubbock City Council is, Lubbock City Council is, has returned from recess and we're back in regular session. We will proceed with the oath of office ceremonies and presentation. We'll begin with Juan Chitus, a city councilman from District 1. So Mr. Chitus, if you and your Deacon Rudy and Sandra would come forward, we'll get I repeat after you.
Repeat after me, Mr. Chitus. By the, by the authority of the state of Texas.
By the authority of the state of Texas.
I, Juan Chitus.
I, Juan Chitus.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office of Lubbock City Council, District 1.
The duties of the office of city council, District 1.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will do the best of my ability.
And will do the best of my ability.
To preserve.
To preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Councilman.
Thank you Deacon. You're not going anywhere. (laughter) Thank you all for the vote of confidence. It's been a brief two years, been two memorable years, something to continue to build upon for the next four. Again, thank you for the vote of confidence. We've got a long journey ahead of us. I thank the dear Lord every day that I wake up for giving me this opportunity. Ms. Karen Gibson, love you lady. Thank you so much. You'll be dearly missed. Before I walk offstage, I want to share a little, something with you guys from a great person, a little quote. It says, "History will judge societies and governments and their institutions, not by how big they are or how well they serve the rich and the powerful, but by how effective they respond to the needs of the poor and the helpless." This is a quote from Cesar Chavez. That's what we want to do. That's what we want to continue to do, to help the community, set the trend. My father, my mother, and God rest their souls always said, "Leave it better than what you found it." And it's an ongoing journey. It'll never end for the next city council that comes in, the city council comes in after them. It's an ongoing journey. Thank you everyone. I love you, love the city of Lubbock, Mayor Pope. Oh, and before I get off, my wife Sandra, my son JR, my grandson Mark, thank you for being here. Sacrifice, sacrifice to the family, major sacrifice. I came from full retirement to full-time city councilman. Karen, you're right, there is no job description here. No one tells you how much time you're going to be spending here at City Hall, endless of hours, especially during budget. I'm shaking like a leaf. This morning, my wife said she's excited, almost as excited as when we got married and I kept thinking, "No, I wasn't shaking this bad when we got married." You can see my microphone is shaking. I'm excited and like I say, I don't remember, we've been married for 50 years. This lady has sacrificed a lot for 50 years putting up with me. Thank you so much. Congratulations, Councilman and Sandra, you too. Next, we'll have the oath of office ceremonies and presentation for Councilman Jeff Griffith. Jeff, were you and Catherine and Representative Dustin Burrows, please come forward. Jeff, will you and Catherine and Representative Dustin Burrows please come forward?
By the authority of the state of Texas, repeat after me. I...
I...
Jeff Griffith...
Jeff Griffith...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will faithfully execute...
That I faithfully execute...
The duties of the office...
The duties of the office...
Of Lubbock City Council...
Of Lubbock City Council...
District Three...
District Three...
Of the state of Texas...
Of the state of Texas...
And will...
And will...
To the best...
To the best...
Of my ability...
My ability...
Preserve...
Preserve...
Protect...
Protect...
And defend...
And defend...
The Constitution...
The Constitution...
And laws...
And laws...
Of the United States...
Of the United States...
And of this state...
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Representative Burrows. Thank you for doing this. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Thank you, Representative Burrows. I'm honored to be here again. I've got a big, long speak, so I hope some of y'all in the back will sit down. No, I really don't. I wanna first say thank you to my family and my friends. Thank you to this council. Thank you to Karen Gibson for tutoring me when it came time to budget, as you have many others, but we applaud your service and your passion, and don't ever stop. This council has got a lot more to do. It's time to focus on the future. We have a evolution, not a revolution, of moving Lubbock's electric power into their cotton grid. Again, I repeat, it's an evolution, not a revolution. So you'll see this council continue that trek ahead. You'll see this council continue to work on cash funding budget items, reducing debt. We actually reduced debt $14 million last year. You'll also see this council continue to make Lubbock not just a great city, but a world-class city by our downtown redevelopment plans. Not just our city center, which is gonna be Citizens Tower, but ongoing with South Plains College and that plan to put in this building a 2,000-student community college in downtown Lubbock, Texas. So I think this council's got a lot of work to do. I'm very excited. I applaud what we've done. Thank you for being the great citizens of Lubbock. Thank you for District Three voters that allows me to do this. I'm honored to serve again. Thank you.
Next, the oath of office ceremonies and presentation for Randy Christian, District Five. Randy, will you and Margaret and the Honorable Judge Brian Quinn please come forward?
Mr. Christian?
Yes, sir.
To the extent you can, please raise your right hand.
I'll be there. There we go.
By the authority of...
Wait a minute. That's not my right hand.
Learned something already.
Yes, I did. The right from my left.
By the authority of the state of Texas...
By the authority of the state of Texas...
I, in the state of Texas...
I, Randy Christian...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will faithfully execute...
That I will faithfully execute...
The duties of the office...
The duties of the office...
Of the Lubbock City Council...
Of the Lubbock City Council...
Member of District Five...
Member of District Five...
Of the state of Texas...
Of the state of Texas...
And will to the best of my ability...
And will to the best of my ability...
Preserve...
And preserve, protect, and defend...
The Constitution...
The Constitution...
And laws...
And laws...
Of the United States...
Of the United States...
And of this state...
And of this state...
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Since this is my first rodeo, I prepared some things and thoughts with you, so bear with me if you would. First of all, good morning to everyone. Thank you for attending. First, I wanna thank the judge for administering the oath of office, and I also wanna congratulate my fellow council members and the mayor for their reelection, and the council ladies, Patterson, Harris, and Joy. I look forward to working with both of you. As many of you know, cancer recently put a pothole in my road to the city council, but by the grace of God and Dr. Tim Miller, we found it early and have a plan to fix it right away. Margaret and I wanna thank everyone who offered prayers, well wishes, and support over the past weeks, and just always remember, as my good friend, Councilman Chitas, would say, "Cancer never wins." Thanks to dear old friends and new friends who generously contributed their time, talents, and funds to our campaign. I will be...we will be forever grateful. And I certainly wanna give thanks to Karen Gibson for eight years of dedication to District Five and the entire city of Lubbock. I know your public service is not over. Also, a special thanks goes to Ben Durham, my dear friend for more than 50 years who served as our campaign treasurer; Eddie Owens, my friend and golf compadre who managed campaign communications; Tony Privet, Mike Stevens for Wise Conversation and Council; Jennifer and Brent Majors; Steve and Kelly Pitts and Mark McDougall for hosting fundraisers; and Steve and Brent McGavick, thank you for your continual support and encouragement. Sue and Jerry Hudson, thanks for helping us launch our campaign in this very room nine months ago. It's hard to believe. And to my sons, Peter and Philip, your mother and I are extremely proud of the fine young men you have become, and I'm absolutely certain that your grandparents are looking down on you right now and are extremely proud of you too. I hope all who are in attendance today have an opportunity to meet them later. And then, there's Margaret, my wife. My loving, patient, strong-willed, eye-dotting, and T-crossing wife and partner, who everyone loves, and I love you too. Yes, we've experienced our share of potholes on the road of life, and a big new one just recently popped up, but thank God you've always been there to help cover, then smooth over those potholes, then, as you always do, point down the road and say, "Let's go." Thank you for loving and encouraging me, and in good times and in bad. But today is also time for me to publicly pledge to carry out my duties as councilman as thoughtfully, honorably, truthfully, and amicably as human possible. I am certainly not perfect, and I know I will fall short many times, but I hope and pray for your swift forgiveness when I do. Over the past several months, I've been reminded with a bit of friendly disgust by those who have run for public office before that I did not get an opponent. But even before committing to run, the thought of an opponent never entered my mind, not even when there was a whisper of a possible opponent. Why? Because I've always believed that positive things happen or can happen when you focus on running for something instead of against something. Every day during our campaign, I considered it a blessing for even the possibility to serve the city that I dearly love. I am so grateful for the privilege provided me to listen and learn from community leaders like the late Tom Martin and many, many others. I am thankful for getting to meet with fellow citizens who are very proud to call Lubbock, Texas, home. I ran for the city council so that I might use my 40 years of life in Lubbock to help our city continue to grow and prosper and become the envy of cities all across the great state of Texas in our nation. I believe we're all for making our city a wonderful place for citizens of all ages to live, work, and play today, tomorrow, and forever, a place where it's easy for us to joyfully say, "Lucky me, I live in Lubbock." I hope you feel lucky too. God bless, and thank you very much.
By the authority of the state of Texas, repeat after me. I, Dan Pope, do solemnly...
I, Dan Pope...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will faithfully execute the duties...
That I will faithfully execute the duties...
Of the office of mayor, Lubbock City Council, and of the state of Texas.
Of the office of mayor, Lubbock City Council, and the state of Texas.
And I will do the best of my ability to preserve, protect, and defend...
And I will do the best of my ability to preserve, protect, and defend...
The Constitution and laws of the United States...
The Constitution and laws of the United States...
And of this state...
And of this state...
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you, baby. My wife Denise is certainly my much better half and my support and my counsel, and so I appreciate all you do for me. Thank you very much. I...I'm gonna be brief this morning, briefer than normal, because my wife has a lunch date, and I'm aware of that. I probably didn't give her a good...do a good job of telling her how long this might last, but I do wanna make a few quick comments. First of all, Karen, thank you. Thank you for all you've done. Thank you for what you've done for the city, but on a personal note, thank you for your friendship and support from the very first day we started talking about this. I'll always be indebted to you for that. Randy, councilman, welcome. All right, ready to go to work. We look forward to working with you. We've had a very busy last 24 months. I think we've made significant progress, but there is much to be done. We first and foremost have to execute on a number of projects that we have approved, that you have approved. That's on the top of the list for us, but we need to make those decisions, not straying far off course, sticking to the vital few, those most important elements of this job, but we need to make those decisions in a way that will allow us to move our community forward. You expect us to be...make common sense conservative decisions. That's something that we will do. You expect us to make decisions to fund public safety, which will defend our homes and our neighborhoods. That's something that we will do. You expect us to operate in the light of day, in the open, communicating and listening and listening. That's something that we will do. We could...I could talk for literally hours about all the great things that are going on in Lubbock, Texas, but we can never take that for granted, and we, as a council, and I think collectively as citizens, are the beneficiaries of difficult decisions and investments that have been made in the past. I look around the room and see former elected officials, and I can just imagine those decisions that they had to make. So as we move forward, I invite you to come with us, to lift us with your good ideas, with your prayers, and sometimes just with a slap on the back. Personally, I can't think of anything that I would rather do than get to serve as mayor of Lubbock, Texas. God bless each of you. It's a great day in Lubbock, Texas. I believe that concludes the business in front of the Lubbock City Council today, so I will adjourn this meeting, but before doing so, I would like to remind you that we have a reception next door, and we want you to stay and enjoy that. It is 12:01. The Lubbock City Council Special Meeting of May 14, 2018 is adjourned.